Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order, please rise for the pledge. The pledge is to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, the next item on the agenda, there was some updates, I should have given them to you. Is approve the agenda, I have two additions under correspondence. Do you want to address the board while you're here tonight?
Sure.
Okay. I'll add item C, which is the St. Clair County MTA Dinner. And I guess we could put a D for Mr. Jeff White from Richmond Lions EMS. And under new business, item I is the St. Clair County MTA dues.
If there's no other additions, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Second?
Moved and supported to approve the agenda as amended. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. Next item is approval of the minutes for the regular meeting of Tuesday, December 9th.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from December, was it 9th meeting? Is that?
Yes.
Support.
Moved and supported to approve the minutes for the meeting of December 9th. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. The next item is the financial report. Colleen?
We began with a balance of $284,722.75. We took in receipts of $58,013.88. And we made dispersments out of the general fund of $58,601.45, leaving us with an ending balance of $284,135.18.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the financial report submitted.
Support.
Moved and supported to approve the financial report as submitted.
What is pre-denial interest?
P R, P R E is personal, your principal residency.
Oh, okay.
And it's kind of a board of review thing, and then we get our money back from the county because we've already collected it, and the county gives it back to us.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. Uh, since Mr. White is getting...
I'm at Richmond Lions monitors, you're being recorded.
You got business, Jeff?
Richmond Township.
You have something you gotta do for a bit? We're waiting for you to get up.
Nope, I'm good.
Oh, if no one has an objection, uh, we'll do, uh, item D.
Now.
Uh, Mr. White first, since you go about sub-zero weather and CS.
So he still is D, or is he moving up to A?
He's D, we just, we just took him out of order.
No, D first, okay, so we'll leave it.
Okay, Jeff.
Right.
Good deal. Um, well, I'll be brief, so that you can all get out of here at home to somewhere warm, I hope, and, uh, because we're a little bit busy tonight at the EMS, um, as well. At rep, you know, monthly, I try to always send a report, uh, here in the township. I happened to just bring that report with me tonight, it saved me sending it. I like to get out every so often and say hello to everybody and see if there's any questions or anything for the EMS. So, um, briefly, um, in, uh, in 2014, um, like, we just got these, uh, kind of reports in. In 2014, the EMS, um, certified 990 people in CPR in first aid. So that's a, that's a pretty significant number over the year. The, the one other announcement I'd like to make while I'm here tonight is the EMS has recently partnered with the Richmond Lions. For years, Richmond Lions had a, um, hospital supply kind of closet, where they had wheelchairs, walkers, other durable medical equipment, that, uh, that they could, uh, that they could loan out to folks who might need them, whose insurance might not cover the cost, or might be uninsured or underinsured to have those kind of things that they need. And over the years, that program has kind of faded away a little bit. We still get a lot of requests in the community for people needing those kind of things. So, we're, we're kind of reinvigorating that with the Lions Club. Um, and, and want to let the community know, we do have available wheelchairs, walkers, other, like I say, what we call durable medical equipment. Uh, they might need shower chairs, crutches, things of that nature. They can contact the EMSs if they, if they're in need of any of that. The supplies over the years have dwindled a bit, so I, I would also say we're also looking for supplies. If, if somebody's aware of, you know, a wheelchair that maybe, or, or a walker, something that they might like to donate, we will take anything that folks donate, even if it's in ill repair. Sometimes we can take parts from an ill-repair unit and, and, you know, uh, put it on a unit that needs a little, a little, um, loving care, if you will. So, uh, so we are doing that, and, um, we've, uh, we've already had, we've always been doing that about a month, and we've already had a number of pieces of equipment go out, uh, in, in the community, so, um, so we're glad that that is, um, available again, uh, to the area. The, um, the next, uh, thing I have to report on is just your, your regular community reports are, uh, are attached here. Um, the, uh, average response time in Casco remains right about where it's been, which is just the shade under eight minutes. There's another report there, and that's a little hard to read because the letters are so small. That's just the way it prints off our new software, but if you take a close look at it, it just gives you an idea of the kind of runs, uh, that we get called to in your community. It kind of gives a breakdown of, um, each run. We had 22 calls in the past month in your community, and it kind of gives a breakdown of each of those runs and, and what, what they were called for. You see it, you know, it starts with everything from, um, you know, abdominal pain, and, uh, you know, ends with, uh, with, uh, traumatic injury, I think, or undefined musculoskeletal pain.
What's no complaints of injury note?
So, so that might be a run where we go out to a, for instance, a motor vehicle accident, and when we get there, we find that nobody is injured. So, there'd be no complaint of injury, you know, in that, in that situation. So that's kind of what the, uh, that's kind of what that report shows, and the report looks a little different than the reports in the past. We had to make a change in our software at the EMS. Like, uh, like townships use BSNA, if you will, there is software for EMS reporting. The company that we had used for a number of years, um, basically got absorbed into a larger company, and so the larger company changed the look a bit of the report. So, uh, that wasn't by desire so much as by, um, requirement of the, of the new company. So, we are working with them a little bit to see if we could even clean up those reports, and I've, uh, implored them to make a couple a little more readable.
What's the primary and secondary column?
Oh, okay, so primary and secondary column, if you look down the list of, um, various, um, medical problems that you see, they're kind of generally defined there. Some patients have a kind of a primary complaint and a secondary complaint, if you will. And so, uh, if you look at the first column, that really lists the, you know, the 22 primary complaints that we were called for. If you look at the next column, there were 19 of those patients that had a secondary complaint, if you will, of the 22, and that's what those two...
You have a couple of them, they have zero under primary and one under secondary.
Right.
So, what would have been the call in that case?
That probably, in all honesty, is, as with all data, and I give it to you in its, in its format that we get it in, that's probably something that we look at internally, uh, because it probably means one of the crews didn't put something in the primary complaint.
I was wondering.
That's a, that's a real, that's a real crew. It's not like any other computer program. You put the information in, and then the information that comes out is only as good as the information that goes in.
That same, but, no, that's about...
And, uh, we don't, we don't filter that, I guess we admit to those errors when they, when, when they come up, so. The, uh, the, the, the other information there is just, uh, we do have a new ambulance in the fleet. This replaced a 1999 vehicle that had 325,000 miles on it. And we said that it was one of the best running vehicles we still, I think, to this day have in the fleet. Uh, it was ready to be retired, there were some undercarriage issues that were starting to become problematic, and, and some other things that a vehicle that old with that many miles required replacement for. But, um, the, uh, just to give you an idea, to give the board an idea, a new vehicle, uh, costs, uh, well, this vehicle cost the EMS $146,000. That vehicle was with nothing inside it, except cabin, so that's not the medical equipment that goes in it, uh, that's, that's nothing, that's just the, the shell of the vehicle, uh, if you will, absent the medical equipment. So it gives you some idea of what's involved, we have six of those at the EMS, so, you know, our rolling stock is, uh, right close to a million dollars, uh, on a given day. This vehicle, I mention it here in Casco especially because the vehicle, uh, designation's Alpha 5. It operates out of our station at 27th Gresham, which covers about half of your township. Basically covers the south half of, of Casco Township from that station. So this vehicle is yours, if you will, uh, for, for that, for that replacement. So, so we're very pleased with that vehicle, like I say, and we're still operating six ambulances, that's what we're operating before, so this wasn't an addition to the fleet, it was just a replacement.
Yeah, um, when you respond to calls in the township, do they primarily come up 27 mile road or 26 mile road, or?
Um, it really depends, some of that is, it, it, that's a great question, because we actually debate that internally. So, there are times when 27 mile road is in a condition that we can travel it fairly quickly, and, and we'll, and we'll use that, especially if they like to get across to County Line, the Americana, um, things of that nature. But there's other times of the year when either due to weather, uh, ice, uh, snow on the back roads, or those times of the year when 27 mile road becomes very, uh, pothole, that it doesn't travel as fast, and it's actually quicker to go down to 26 mile road where you have a paved surface. So we, the crews that are at that station kind of keep a pretty good track of that. They'll, when they go out to get a bite to eat, or go to the grocery store, or, or other things that they're going out to do, um, they'll actually travel some of the roads, so that whether you get the responses, they'll know which road's gonna travel quickest. Because sometimes it can change, you know, literally this time of year, day by day, as far as what road's gonna be the better, you know, the better option. So, when the road's good and hard and packed well, you can travel that road at a reasonable enough speed that, that, uh, you know, you're not gonna travel at the same speed you do a paved road, but still a reasonable enough speed to, to pick up some time, uh, traveling across that road. So, not, not an exact answer, I know, but, but that's what we deal with with a lot of our gravel roads in the area. I do mention we have our 1999 ambulants, uh, it's been what we call decommissioned, which means the emergency lights are off it, the equipment's out of it. We scavenge everything off those vehicles that we might be able to possibly use, uh, on, on, on other vehicles like it, uh, before we sell it, but it is, it is for sale. We are taking sealed bids, uh, on the vehicle, uh, at this point. And if somebody has questions about that, then contact the EMS office, so. Uh, it can't be used for an ambulance any longer, but, uh, we do have people that purchase them and use them for their construction companies and things of that nature, that they, uh, that they end up using the, using the vehicles for. Maybe they just take the engine out of it and use that. The particular engine in that vehicle's a very, a very good engine as far as diesel engines wet. It's, it's the old 7.3 liter diesel, and, um, those were really, a really well-built, well-built diesel engine for folks who know about such things. Um, and then the other items are just some thank you notes we get throughout the month, uh, at the EMS, and I always like to share those, and, kind of like our reporting, we share those unfiltered. We, all we do is take the patient's name off, um, you know, ensure we don't breach anyone's confidentiality, but we kind of put the word out exactly the people, the, exactly the way that people give the word to us, if you will. I think, I think there's probably no better way to say you're doing a good job than, than be a thank you note from somebody. Uh, with that, um, I don't have anything else to report unless there are any questions, so just do like to get out every spot into each community and say hello, and make sure all's going well from the EMS stand.
Yeah, we're at the Richmond Shore Commerce Dinner there at, uh, last month. That was interesting, it was a good time, but interesting to hear about some local members of the community better than I knew them. But, uh, it was good, it was a good time.
There was a, there was a lady at our table from the Historical Society, and she was asking everybody, kind of, Mrs. Hable, and she was asking everybody at the table kind of what their background was and what brought them here as part of her kind of role of the Historical Society, so it was interesting to hear.
Yeah.
Uh, just at our table, some of the different, you know, how and when people came to the, you know, the Richmond and surrounding.
Yeah, our three of us were, you know, born here, we didn't have an option, but...
Jeff, you did a lot of, you had a lot of CPR training last year, almost 1,000?
Yes, almost 1,000 people.
Are you still doing that?
Oh, yes, yep, we, we have a community class every month. That, that class is just open to anybody who wants to come in. It's the second Saturday of the month, always at the EMS. But we'll, we'll take our class on the road anywhere. We do a lot of work with the schools, um, New Haven, Richmond, Memphis schools. We do a lot of work with both their students, uh, we go in and teach, um, usually anywhere from the, some of the schools have it, the eighth grade up to the 12th grade, uh, that we go in and teach. We do a lot of training for their teachers, because apparently, uh, as I understand it, there's some of the teacher certifications now that require CPR training, so we go in and, and do it with them. But we've done it, um, local churches are a big place, we do training, uh, as well as any, any community group, Rotary Lions, if, if the township wanted to have a CPR class here on any given day, you know, or on a Saturday morning or something, and say, "We'd just like to open this up to the community", I would say once the weather gets better, because I think you get more people out then. But, uh, you know, we could come here and put out a CPR class one morning. Anytime we can get, if we can get four people together in a room, we'll teach them CPR. We know, medically, we know that if CPR doesn't get started in the first four to six minutes, it doesn't matter how much I spend on an ambulance, the, the person's probably not going to survive. So, we feel like we have the opportunity to save more lives through CPR than we do with putting more ambulances on the road. So we're, we're willing to do it anywhere, anytime.
Yeah, a member of my unit, um, we, we do CPR training out, um, in the military there, but he was saying that he had a neighbor of his, you know, some, several years ago up in Emmett, who had a massive heart attack, and, um, as it turned out, the gentleman still died with like a an aorta, you know, rupture or that. But he says that, you know, you thought, would I remember my training? He says it came back to him just instantaneously, what to do.
Well, there's a lot of new information in CPR, and I won't take up a whole lot of your time with it tonight other than to say, um, they've made CPR even easier than it had been in the past, especially for the lay public. They've really put a lot less emphasis on the ventilation part, that's the breathing part, a lot more emphasis on the compression part, and, um, yeah, it's, it's almost embarrassing, you know, being a person whose educational life has been spent in the world of science, to say, "We don't exhale oxygen." Go figure, right? So, when we're blowing air into these people out of our mouths, we're really not doing them as great a good as we thought. So unless we're hooked up to an oxygen delivery device, we believe that it, it, and we, meaning the American Heart Association, American Red Cross, the people who teach these things, and the doctors who make these decisions, believe that we're probably better off just pushing on their chest when we don't have that, the access to that ability. And you would have thought all of us alleged educated people would have been able to figure that out before now, right?
Yeah.
And so, we didn't, but, but we're, we're doing it right now, so.
Okay.
I guess only one question for you, Jeff. On the first page where you're partnership with the Lions?
Yeah.
You don't have any problem if I plagiarize that for our newsletter?
Oh, no, please do, we, we're trying to get the word out, um, you know, again, I'm trying to be brief, but what happened was Richmond Lions had done this for years, and Tom Hable, who had the mower shop there on 32 mile road, had all this equipment. The Richmond Lions kind of decided for whatever reason to get out of that business, and they turned it over to a group in Snyderville called the Snyderville Lions, and they had it up there, and were doing a, a good job of it. We referred a lot of people to them that we called EMS leader for this stuff. Well, the Snyderville Lions unfortunately disbanded, they just didn't have enough membership to continue going on. And so, um, Richmond sort of got it back, and, you know, the EMS seemed to just be the appropriate fit to help the Lions Club out with that. We already have a lot of equipment, we, we do our own maintenance and repair, like on the stretchers for the ambulants, we actually sent, uh, one of our paramedics to school to learn to do that. He's got a lot of information on, you know, how to get the wheels back on wheelchair, if you will, through his training. And so, uh, so we, we just seem to be the fit, I think, to, to do that and help them with that. The Richmond Lions is still, um, kind of helping us oversee the program, ensuring the program, actually paying for a storage locker for the stuff to go in, because right now, in our current buildings at the EMS, we just don't have room for it all. Uh, so the Richmond Lions are still very much a part of this, um, of this, of this program. We're just kind of taking the care of the day-to-day operation of it.
Well, Jim Engels did that for many years.
He did, yes, before, yeah, but, yeah, Jim Engels before, uh, before Mr. Hable, yes, at the hardware.
Okay, thank you for coming.
Thank you, I, I appreciate it. I used to like to stay for the rest of the meeting, but we are a little bit busy tonight, so I'm gonna run back to the station.
That's okay, understand.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Let's keep warm. Okay, moving on. Item A, in your packet, under correspondence, there's an invitation to the EDA semi-annual luncheon, and it's scheduled for February the 10th. So, if any of you are so interested in going, you can either get together or make your own reservation. There's no cost involved, I don't believe, and, uh, go to the luncheon.
Well, um, I guess they talk about, like, how they're developing.
Yeah, they really, uh, counsel a lot. Mr. Incarnati from McLaren Health is gonna be the guest speaker. I'm sure they'll focus on, uh, you know, the EDA.
Yeah, it's amazing, I mean, now, a lot of these communities, like hospitals and that, are their biggest employers. Yeah, like Port Huron, they used, newer brass used to be big, thousands of, hundreds of people. Now it's not, hospitals up there.
Well, they're getting much bigger since, uh, the new Healthcare Act. You can see all the people, all the big ones going through the size.
Oh, sure.
McLaren, Henry Ford.
Well, didn't Port Huron Hospital, they got bought, didn't they?
So did Mercy.
Yeah.
Yeah, Mercy, that's right.
So...
I think it's McLaren, uh, Port Huron Hospital.
So, okay, more than welcome to go, if you like. Moving on, item B, we have a letter from a resident, uh, kind of put the update. Mr. Poppy's complained about the ditch in front of his house. It's kind of a strange thing there, and it's not simple. There's a low-cost, a reasonably low-cost fix, but it's not a good permanent fix. There's a possibility we could apply for matching funds later this year. To fix it right, you would have to clean the ditch, probably at least 1,000 feet, maybe a half a mile, to take, because otherwise you're taking the water in a direction it doesn't want to go, and then it goes on private property, so...
And he doesn't want to pay any part?
Well, we offered him a fix, and at that time he was building a pole barn, he didn't have any money. But, we're still gonna look into it, and, uh, his biggest problem is, is septic field is level pretty much with the surrounding ground, so when it gets wet, the septic field doesn't work properly because it's underwater. So, so it's not a simple thing, but...
One of the road commission board members told me that, um, they may be getting some money, and a lot of it could be included ditching. I said, "That's good, 'cause we owe you that."
Yeah, but when you come for matching money, ditching, unless it's something really vital, is really low on the total poll.
Because the only reason they want to do ditching is to fix the road, right?
Well, their purpose is it makes, keeps the road better, if you ditch. But, you know, their bridges are number one.
Yeah.
If you got something with a bridge, you're probably gonna get it. And after that, there's two or three things, but the last one of the list is usually ditching, so...
Would, he mentions Dave and Tracy Graham.
He's next over.
Would they control it?
Well, I don't think they have a water problem, because their house is way off the road, and they're like on the edge of the hill, and the water takes off from there.
Oh.
Unfortunately, it goes down this little hill and runs in the guy's cornfield, and it's not a natural water course. So if we clean that out, Mr. Poppy's water would also go in the guy's cornfield.
Oh.
And that's okay if the guy lets you, but if he gets mad, he'll dam it up, and then you did all that.
For nothing.
Where the water wants to go the opposite direction, so you have to clean a lot of ditch to do that. Okay, moving on, item C, it's the annual St. Clair County MTA annual dinner. It's the invitations, and, uh, it is gonna be February 6th at the Solitude Links, which used to be Four Links.
Yeah, I would like, is anyone else wanting to go there?
I know you have till the 23rd, I believe, to make your reservation. I guess it would not be inappropriate to have a motion that whoever wants to go, the township will cover the cost of their dinner, which is $30 a person.
I still move.
I'll support that.
Moved and supported. Is there any discussion on that? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. Moving on, we have no old business, on a new business, item A. Every year in January, we allocate money to the Emergency Road Fund. Normally it's $20,000, so once again, I have it on the agenda, to allocate $20,000 for the Emergency Road Fund. We have the money still in our budget, under the roads, so we don't have to take it out of anything else.
All right, I make a motion to allocate $20,000 for the Emergency Road Fund.
Support.
Moved and supported, allocate $20,000 to the Emergency Road Fund. Is there any discussion? I guess we'll have a roll call vote, it's $20,000, please.
Hang on.
Yes.
Dan, I'm sorry.
Is that what you said?
No, I said, "Hang on", but that's okay. Dan, okay. Joe?
Yes.
Pat, yes. Bill?
Aye.
And Colleen, yes.
Okay, hopefully we won't meet it. Moving on, item B, Resolution 2015-01, set the annual meeting and budget hearing. In your packet is a copy of the resolution, and it sets the annual meeting and budget hearing for March the 10th, 2015.
Need motion to adopt.
To adopt the resolution.
Make a motion to adopt Resolution 2015-01.
Support.
Moved and supported to adopt Resolution 2015-01. Any discussion?
Are we gonna expound on that, that we're setting the date for March 10th, 2015?
I said it.
It wasn't in the motion, huh?
No, it's on the resolution.
It's in the resolution.
But, if you'd like it, I can reiterate that it's March the 10th of this year. It'll be at our regular meeting, but we'll have another meeting first, which is the annual meeting. We will have a roll call vote, please.
Colleen?
Yes.
Bill?
Aye.
Pat, yes. Joe?
Yes.
And Dan?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item C, local road funding agreement. Back in December, late November, the county had some money left over, so they reopened the local road fund assistance program. So at that time, I came to the board, the board approved applying, and it's for the other bridge on Hessen Road. And we were awarded approval of that, and we need to have board approval now for the numbers indicated, so I can send this into the county, so then they can start doing their engineering work. The projected cost, and it was kind of speculative because it was a hurry, up deal, but projected total cost is $70,000, and we will contribute half, $35,000, and the County Road Commission will match that with $35,000.
That's the first of the replacements on Hessen, and then the other one will be replaced through the Critical Bridge Program.
The other one was in the federal thing.
Right.
We did one on Hessen last year, now this year we'll be doing both the other ones. Okay, but the one that's all locked in, and, uh, since they really dropped our cost on that, I thought, "Let's get them out of the way."
Okay, wait a minute, well, we did the one on Lindsey Road.
We did Hessen Road in '14, by Springboard.
Okay, by Springboard.
Now this year, we're gonna do Hessen Road near 26, and Hessen Road by Luban.
Okay, which one's gonna be the critical, um, with the Critical Bridge Program, is that?
That's the one by 26.
Okay, right.
Unfortunately, that was the only bridge we had that had a wide enough span to go for the federal money.
Right.
Otherwise, we'd have done it all.
Sure.
The other ones, one missed by four inches, and one missed by two inches.
Missing, okay, and this, okay, and this one is the one near Springborn, right?
No.
Near Luban.
Yep.
Okay.
No, we applied for the one by s- by twenty-six, we applied for that three years ago.
Right.
That's a three-year deal.
Yeah.
And that's gonna be put in this year.
That's why it kinda got thrown out for this.
So this was a late addition, because they had some money they wanted to, uh, match, and we applied for it, and at the end of the year, we should not have a bridge on any of our roads with a low rate.
Good.
Which is a good thing.
Yes, let's do this thing.
We need a motion to approve this.
Okay, make a motion to approve the local road funding agreement.
Support.
Moved and supported, to approve the local road funding assistance program. Do you wanna include any dollars in your motion, or not? Just the township share, or whatever?
Okay, this, the, uh, the township shall contribute a total of thirty-five thousand dollars.
Is that okay with the support, personally?
Yes.
What happens, um, if it moves over that, we just have to come back and revisit?
Well, the one last year was at seventy-two, I think it ended up around fifty-three, so I'm really pretty confident.
They're highballing it.
They always do that to cover themselves.
Yeah, just in case they're digging some sort of surprise.
So, I'm pretty confident, and I guess we have to sit down again, but I don't think that's gonna be a problem.
Yeah, like when they did, um, I know it was our township, but when they did, uh, the river bridge on the Vision Road, and they started to dig up footing, they hit the the, the, the foundation from the original build, bridge built back in eighteen eighty. So that was, yeah.
Okay, any other discussion on that? Uh, I guess we'll have a roll call vote on that also, please.
Okay, Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Pat, yes, Bill?
Aye.
And Colleen, yes.
Motion carries. Okay, uh, we just got, we didn't, we're gonna get it tomorrow, but every year, the road commission meets with the township, and, uh, tells you how much money they're gonna give you this year, and what's new and exciting, and all that good stuff. And for us, it's gonna be February twenty-fifth. Uh, I just found out today, but I didn't reserve a time slot, because we're meeting tonight. We used to go six-thirty to eight-thirty last year, I think we went three-thirty to five-thirty. So, if anyone has a preference, let me know, I'll call in tomorrow, it's first come, first served, down to time, and we'll go from there.
I mean.
I'm flexible, I guess, yeah, early afternoon is nice.
Three-thirty?
Yeah, they'll be fine.
What is it, three-thirty tomorrow?
Five-thirty. And it's gonna come up sooner or later, about the road tour. Now, we, we did go the one here, then we went the next two, uh, I don't really think you learn a lot on that.
Okay, we, we could pass over this year, I mean, every year.
Every year.
Yeah, no, I agree with that.
Okay, anybody have problem with that?
No.
When they complete the work that we want done, on the tour that we went, then I'll go on another one. Other than that, we're just blowing smoke here.
Yeah, they complete the work, and it's almost like, you know, the, you know, you patch up some, then we'll see where the other.
Yeah.
I don't know, 'cause the last time we went, there was a hole in the road where the culvert gave out, nobody knew it was there.
Well, you know, Tom said about, there's that culvert ad air, they didn't know where it exited out of.
That isn't road work.
There was what?
Tom was saying there's that one culvert ad air, that he didn't know where the exit was, water went in, but he didn't know where it came out of.
Okay, it's about the cemetery.
Yeah, yeah, we'll see.
Okay.
Mike had no clue about it, so maybe we'll keep.
Okay, so it's gonna be February twenty-fifth, and I'll call in with the three-thirty, five-thirty, and I'll let you know if that's, gets moved yet. Okay, moving on, item E, uh, we discussed in previous months about renting the park property for the raising of crops. So, in your packet is a sample of what we would post in the newspaper, and also a sample of your rental agreement. So, if anybody has any input, or problems with it, or if it's good to go, uh, we probably should get just a motion to approve it, if you're happy with it.
Any several questions?
Yeah.
What is, what would happen if somebody did not yield the property back to the township?
We'd have to go to war, Dan.
Well...
I mean, that's...
I don't think, I don't think anything, because the day it expires, now, if they didn't pay the thing and you tried to terminate it, that might be a little different, but if it's expired, you can just kick them off as trespassing.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
Okay, 'cause as a...
It's not a rental home.
Yeah, it's, well, or even a commercial tenant, you can't break.
Yeah.
You have to go through the court, courts gotta do it. But if it's, I mean, that's really what I wanted to know, is it, is different?
Plus, the crops are seasonal, so...
Yeah.
You know, the, the rent is due before the first of the year, so if we don't have the rent, they're not gonna be planting the crops, so there's no
Yeah.
loss on their part by that.
But it's not like an eviction where it's expensive and difficult?
No.
It's much more straightforward in this case, very good.
And I don't think it would be a problem.
I don't either.
Most farmers are like that.
I don't either, but sometimes things get funny.
We, we got everything but the kitchen sink, yeah, rental agreement.
We're protected, yeah, yeah.
Okay, we can get a motion.
Well, I'll, I'll make a motion then, to approve this Casco Township, uh, the rental agreement for publication.
All support.
Yep. Okay, moved and supported, to approve the, uh, publication and rental agreement, any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, standing, motion carries.
Joe?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, moving on, quarterly report and budget amendments, in your packet was a list of proposed budget amendments in the quarterly financial report for the three-quarter mark, and just trying to get a jump on things, so that we don't end up at the end of the fiscal year making all kinds of changes. The only big change is, or discrepancy really, that's amounts to anything, is the maintenance. We had to do, last year, we did a lot of work on the computers, plus we had the two elections, we had to do work on the machines for the elections, and that was primarily the cause of that.
Oh, and also changing with the assessor, the maintenance, too.
Need the Windows Seven.
The Windows Seven, and...
And then we had a, we had BSNA upgrade.
Yeah, right.
Which was, even though we budgeted, by the time they did all that?
You're right.
It ran over.
Right. Just part of doing this.
So we would need a motion, if you're selling clients, to approve the budget amendments, you wanna read them?
We approve the budget amendments I submitted.
Support.
Patty, do you want them read?
Um, I can read them if you want, I can too. Um, the amendments are for deputy treasurer, it'll be account 101, 253, 704, for three hundred dollars. Assessor's assistant, 101, 101, 714, another three hundred dollars. 101, 101, 707, for board secretary, for two hundred dollars. 101, 101, 371, 707, for building secretary, two hundred dollars. 101, 101, 215, 704, for deputy clerk, two hundred dollars, and that was because they received the raise, that's why we had to change the budget. Just wanted that clarified, but they go over, still good, okay. 101, 101, 930, maintenance for five thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight dollars, the total is six thousand, five hundred and seventy-eight dollars. I will deduct that from attorney fees, which is 101, 101, 826. We have twenty thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars there, and forty-five cents, when I take out the sixty-five, seventy-eight, we'll have fourteen, two seventy-two, forty-five left in that account.
Okay.
Our attorney fees are way down.
Pretty low.
That's good, that's great.
I'm happy.
All right, and we need your support.
Support.
No, you made more.
Colleen did support.
Colleen did, okay, I'm sorry, Colleen.
Are you gonna put that in the minutes book as part of the motion, all those things you read?
Yeah.
So that was part of your motion, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, that's part of your support. Okay, moved and supported, to approve the budget amendments, any discussion, a roll call vote, please?
Colleen?
Yes.
Bill?
Aye.
Pat, yes, Joe?
Yes.
And Dan?
Yes.
Okay, moving on, item G, master plan discussion. And we talked a little bit, but not very much about this, uh, the planning commission is kinda discussing it, it's gonna be on their agenda next Tuesday. I did give you a little, a flyer or handout from Clearzoning, who is our planner. Basically, the losses every five years, you have to either redo your plan, or write up that you looked at it and it was satisfactory. Last month, I gave everybody copies of the zoning map and the future land use map, and they're both on the wall here or in here. They're not, neither one is exact, but unless you see changes coming, or you wanna make changes, uh, I don't know if it's gonna do much good at this point in time to visit the master plan. Now, hopefully, we're gonna be, this year, we'll be discussing a possible 425 agreement again, with the neighboring townships and city. Now, that may have some impact, and if it does, you can do the master plan review anytime you want, it doesn't have to be on the fifth year.
What's, what's the nature of this impact?
Well, I don't know, it depends how the talks go, if they were that far away from settling it about three times, but it would mostly impact the Grashut Avenue corridor. As far as uses, uh, millage, annexation, you know, water sewer, from the city, a host of things. So, depending on that, you might say, okay, well, we've got enough B-two zoning, okay? Because if you look at the map, we have corner county line, we have the Grashut corridor, and then ad air, a little bit up at thirty-two and pounds. So, if you knew that for the next fifty years, that that corridor would generate two bills and taxes, and the owners of the property there could ask to go to Richmond in exchange for that, uh, it'd still be a business, well, then you may say, we've got plenty of room. On the other hand, if you don't get an agreement, and you start annexing stuff, it'll be like, the property that was annexed, which isn't shown on either map, by the way, that's long gone, you lost that business zoning. So, it would be very beneficial if you knew they had a better handle on what the future was gonna hold in that respect. So, does anybody have any insights, after looking at the maps, that they think needs to be addressed right now?
So this is, the property would be annexed into Richmond, but it would share on the tax.
Well, that was what they were discussing, that for fifty years, uh, any property that was annexed, that Richmond accepted, they would pay a small amount of millage cash, which would be more than we're getting now, by the way, but...
Yeah.
But it's negotiable, and they were very, they were that far from settling it a couple of times. So I've been bugging them for two years, and, uh, I think this year, hopefully, we can sit down.
Yeah, I ran into Tim Ricks a couple weeks ago, and he was saying you asked, uh...
Well, I bugged him a little.
Yeah, you mentioned that, too.
What a surprise.
So, I guess, uh, unless you've got something you wanna bring up in this area, we'll let the planning commission come up with their recommendation, and see if it looks good.
We'll take a look at this.
Sounds good.
Because it is not, to go through a full review is very expensive.
Right.
And park, you know, there's two, there's parking wrecks, and there's regular. And, I'm still, I mentioned in the thing here, I, I haven't come up with any brainstorms on good use for parking wrecks, at this time, that would benefit the people of Casco, and be viable. So, but I'm still looking, but, uh, so, any brainstorms, love to hear it. Okay, moving on, item H, everybody got a little questionnaire on the township hall?
Yeah.
Uh, I guess I'd ask tonight, when you do, you put your name on, so you got a point, you have an idea who did it. And we can compile the numbers, but, uh, I'd just like to get some direction on where to look.
Sure.
I don't know that, to be honest with you, I don't think a new hall is a possibility. We don't have that kind of money, and, uh, the township doesn't have that many people to utilize it. So, we're down to the other ones, and, uh, but I don't wanna do a lot of research on if you guys are telling me something different.
Yeah.
You know, the board rules the roost.
Well, we do, go, I'm sorry, let you talk first.
I think we need a new entrance there, a new entrance, have it incorporated in a way to meet ADA compliant, that, and also have it so you could have like a customer service area. And two, I think the current area, we should look at, um, how, um, utilize that space better. I mean, the furniture we have, we've gotten over, you know, kind of a collection over the years, they sell mod, um, you could have someone come in and look at it. You know, modular officer, and that'd probably maximize that space a lot better, and, uh, it'd be at a fraction of a cost of an addition.
We're gonna need an addition, sorry, I need my own office, Bill needs his own office. I'm talking on the phone, and there's two other people talking, she's on the phone, we can't hear.
We're gonna keep you guys off each other's nerves.
Really? Now, I was being nice, and I'm bringing that up.
Hold up, um, now addition, just out back from the current one, onto it?
That would probably be your only, uh, way to go.
Yeah.
Probably take a variance to do that.
And we'd have to remodel the whole existing inside.
Alright. I mean, we're gonna, we're gonna be out of storage pretty soon.
Alright.
Unless you wanna spend a boatload of money getting everything put on computers, you're gonna need some storage, I mean, you've gotta keep the stuff, uh, it's in the basement, but it's getting full down there.
We could also look at, put it in a storage place.
Yeah, okay.
The really old stuff.
The size of the expansion, do you envision about, um, you take the, the, the addition, and is there now like double the size of it, or?
Probably close, I mean, you're gonna run out of property, 'cause technically, that's the rear of the property, so it's supposed to have thirty-five feet of setback, well, there's only about fifty feet there right now. So it depends on the variance that you get.
At, at one time, there was an opportunity to expand this property somewhat, is that?
But that's, he doesn't wanna sell.
I asked the owner, and at this time, no, he's not interested.
Yeah, too bad, 'cause that would solve our recreation.
Yeah, that'd be nice.
I mean, I can ask him again, but, uh...
Yeah, the only problem is agriculture come very hot, you know?
Well, no, it's a part of this property, as well as on it and stuff.
We missed the window of opportunity, I'm afraid, I thought we should do that.
So...
Well, that was a really conservative approach.
I can ask him again.
Well, let's, we'll at least, we'll get in the place, we'll look into getting a little bit better, upgrade the furniture.
Right, okay, I'm with you, because really, all of her furnishes is clunky.
I can't even open my drawers.
Right, her drawers don't open.
Right.
We have to pull it out, shove it in.
We have to open, on my desk, two drawers to get this one.
Right.
That's security, isn't it?
That's what I'm thinking, this is a good security.
You got past that for that.
And it's jobs if you're a good job, nobody can get in my desk.
We'd raise it up, we'd raise the whole part, raise it up to match like the level of here and going back.
Well, you could've, that office wasn't there.
Yeah.
But, I'll look into it and see what I can find.
Unless a few ladies wanna camp down in the basement for some...
Nah, they ain't having to.
Well...
That's not even fit to put a lecture in.
Even with the addition, then you have the option of the walls that are in the current office, they could be taken down, they're not weight-bearing at all.
No.
And you know, when you walk into most places, they have a receptionist type of thing.
Right, and, and they're separated from the public.
Then they have a hallway... Then they have a hallway that you can go down to go to wherever you're going. So...
The one nice thing that we don't have, we walk in, it's just that it shows government at its basic laws.
Yeah. We are basic.
No frills. No frills government.
Anyway, I finally got the cement done in the entranceway, so that's, uh...
Nobody trips anymore.
That's not...
No, they don't, they haven't, really.
Okay. Alright, I, I, I support. I mean, if you wanna go further, you know, on the question.
Well, I'll compile, pass these down, if you would, please.
Okay.
Uh, we'll compile them and get them out to you, so you can see what, what they were. And we'll do some research and get back in.
I'm glad that the board feels that I like the aspect, 'cause this is the very center of the township.
Yeah, I don't wanna re...
I think we're the only township hall in Tyler County that's on gravel roads. All the rest are on a paved road.
You're right.
I'm not against paving Melton Road. You just put that out there.
Well, it's a little quirky, I think, and this was never a schoolhouse. People think it was. It was always a township hall.
Yeah.
I just staged...
Yeah, that, yeah, I know.
Maybe we could open it back up.
Back up, an old Christmas place there.
What do you wanna do after you open it up?
Put you up there.
Well, I still have elections in here, and that's storage right now, so I'm sorry.
Actually, it's pretty full right now. You hardly walk there. Okay.
Like bad paperwork from, uh...
So we'll compile that, get that out to you, and I'm gonna start trying to get some information.
We should just have a spatial engineer come.
Well, it's gonna, it's gonna have to have an engineer draw it up. That's the law.
What's a spatial engineer, somebody that throws stuff out?
Well, you know what? It's, it's surprising. Every time I think I want something at, at the house, and I can't imagine how to do it, I call the guy that lives on Melton Road, and he takes a look, and, and he just...
Sees it as that.
His, his mind works like that. He's an architect. He's a, he's an engineer. You can look at it forever and not see what they see, and not see the solutions that they see, which always end up being, uh, less expensive than if you cobbled something together and tried to make it do yourself, you know, so...
Right.
I think they're worth the money.
We have an architect in the township. I've already mentioned it to him a couple of times. Now I can work on him.
Mr. Telford?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
He's always a method in his madness.
Well, it's okay to leverage the talents of our members.
That's it. You can get some builders and bricklayers.
Moving on. Item I. We just got it today.
Oh.
I wouldn't have had to throw it on.
You really don't need to have it.
I could've went FYI, we don't need board action, but just to tell you that we got a bill for our dues to the county MTA for twenty-five bucks.
We should pay.
We always do. I, I'm going, what?
I know, but...
But I let him. It makes him happy.
Okay.
Bring in that bill.
Moving on.
So you're, what was that, no motion or anything?
Nah, we don't need it.
We don't need a motion for that. That's...
Nah.
He just wanted...
We just discussed it.
Should've been FYI, actually.
I know, but then you wouldn't have got excited.
He likes to keep my heart perfect.
Okay, moving on. Paying of the bills.
Any questions? Anybody?
Making a motion to pay the bills.
Okay, support.
We got Dan and Colleen.
What a good choice.
Moved and supported to pay the bills. Any discussion? Or a roll, a roll call vote, please?
Okay, Colleen?
Yes.
Bill?
Aye.
Pat, yes. Joe?
Yes.
And Dan?
Yes.
Okay, no citizens to comment?
So...
So I guess, anybody?
Where's Mr. Boundeck?
I don't know.
It's cold out.
Roland was gonna come and chew on you guys tonight.
Well, you know what? He might be up there. He was up at the church this morning. There might be a problem up there with pipes or something. And there's a church meeting tonight, so he might be up reporting to them on what needs to be done.
Well, the furnace hasn't warmed yet, but they did have some problems.
Either that, or he's just home being warm.
The MTA thing on my application to say the township's gonna pay it, or?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think you bring a check that night, don't you? Is that how we do it?
I don't know, ask.
Ask, ask them how they wanna get paid.
Okay.
And, and we'll... Okay, I make a motion to adjourn. Support?
Moved and supported to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, standing there.
Seven fifty-five, I think.